All right, let's call the meeting to order.
Motion to call meeting order.
Just call it.
Let's go. Most adjourned, we go on that separate.
Before you came down, Joe, that's all I can say. Let's see, anyone here from Steve knows where they? Put him as excuse, I don't see my firm and sign it, is he coming in at all?
Not yet.
Put him in for this excuse for a moment. First item on the agenda, consideration of the meeting minutes from October 13th, 2021. You want to have any changes?
I just have the red marked for me, that's to remind me to get a hold of those people. I'll just take that out, it's just to remind me to look for it.
It's kind of dark. I knew it was Wednesday. Then I realized it's getting late.
So, we're at the minute, Steve. Yes, I know where we're at, just looking at the minutes.
Notice in two spots, at least, it says Planning Board Members. Is we just say the Planning Board was?
I'm sorry there.
What's that count?
Where?
Let's see, line 185 and 26. I think you might be referring to Paul instead of the Planning Board.
Okay, it could be, I wasn't sure who spoke, so.
Okay, Paul was speaking.
Okay, so I'll put that.
So that's.
You put me down there, that's fine.
And then like, then line 201, again, it says Planning Board Members, determined it should just say the Planning Board. And you got a line 328, Planning Board Members.
Not seeing, it must be lined up, oh, I see, 323.
Oh, excuse me, that's me.
I'm going to approve this, man.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, any abstentions? New business, conceptual 20. Conceptual 2021-5, map 106 lot 20, Moon Mountain Recreation Corporation. Conceptual, Moon Mountain Recreation Corporation proposes to take the quad lift that was removed from the Kangamangas Express and request, replace with an eight seat ski lift and use the former Kangamangas Express Quad Ski Lift to replace the current Seven Brothers Lift. The quad lift, the quad is not the same size as the current Seven Brothers Lift. Presenter Brian Norton, Vice President of Operations, Moon Mountain Resort, 60 Moon Mountain Road, Lincoln. SPI 2020-20, map 108 lot 64, that's it. Brian, you here?
I am, thanks for hearing us tonight, guys. So we're, as you just read, we're trying to move the Kangamangas Quad Lift, which came out this summer, as you guys all know, over to the Seven Brothers location next summer. So similar timeline to the construction this year, where we'd ski on the existing lift all winter and then implement on changing to a new lift or a new installation next summer. It's a, it's an in-kind replacement, it's a one ski lift for another. The location is very similar in terms of takeoff and landing point. It's the same, we are gonna move just to the west slightly to accommodate, you know, some space in the, in the base area really is what it comes down to and improve some skier traffic up in that Lower Grand Junction area where Seven Brothers unloads currently, but we're talking, I think, 10 feet to the west. Not a major movement, just increase some, really the base area is what it comes down to. So we're here just asking for if we need site plan review. In the past, we haven't needed it for such lifts and this is really a chairlift for a chairlift. There's no major parking structure or anything attached to it, it's just a chairlift we already own and we're gonna refurbish this winter and install on a new location.
Do we know who iPhone 12 is?
Is that Mark? Oh, no, we can see Mark up at the top here.
Oh, she's back.
No, Mark. Styles.
Oh, yeah, okay. iPhone 12, can you let us know who you are, please? All right. All right, so you have any questions for Brian right off?
I don't know what questions, but I have a comment that, that this is a little different than the other lift. The other lift, even though it was presented as a, just a change for a chair and chair, it ended up being a pretty big project and ended up chewing up a lot of ground, but this one is bigger than the current Seven Brothers Lift, it's in front of the mountain club. I know there were some concerns with the other lift. I guess, well, I don't have a problem with exchanging a lift for a lift that's the same size. I kind of look at this, I was trying to break this and try and figure it out and thinking that maybe this is like a restaurant. So you have a restaurant that has 100 seats in it, all of a sudden they're gonna expand it and put it to a 200-seat restaurant. What does that do to the surrounding, they would have to come in. And I think that, you know, down at the west end, it's probably not so much residential area, but up on the Seven Brothers end, there is the whole mountain club, there's the residents that are up near to try and get their way down. And I think that we probably ought to have site plan review if for no other reason than to at least allow the ability for people to come in and voice any, any concerns they may have.
Okay, Brian, how many more skis will you handle a day with this?
Yeah, so I got a couple of statistics in front of me. For one, the old lift had a maximum capacity, so the amount of people that were on the lift at any given time of 201. This lift is 136, so it's actually less people on it at any given time. Now, the rope speed is faster because it's a detachable chairlift and you're going, you know, and that's even with going from three to four, but because the rope speed is faster because it's a detachable chairlift, the capacity changes from 1,800 an hour to 2,400 an hour. So the capacity is higher, the potential capacity is higher, but people on the chair itself is actually the less.
Hey, can I, I'm gonna add into that for Brian, it's Jay. Sorry, I just don't have a camera at the moment. The capacity of the chairlift has really not much to do with the amount of tickets that we're selling on any given day for people to come and enjoy skiing at Loon. So it, it's, it's not apples and apples, it's not a piece that you can, you can easily correlate. Our objective here in increasing the, improving Seven Brothers, I should call it, is to speed up access to trails for people with a high-speed detachable lift. The, the primary improvement that we are gaining here is on inclement weather days when the gondola, we lose the gondola to high wind. And as a result of that, people would only have a fixed grip chairlift to ride up out of octagon base area, which creates a bit of congestion even on the slowest days. So our, our main move here is improving the experience for guests, be able to get up out of the base area and not have it be a 13-minute lift ride, have it be more of a, and Brian, I can't remember the exact number, excuse me, but more of an eight-minute lift ride.
Will the lift change or enable you to sell more tickets?
No, and actually, in terms of tickets this year, we're still continuing to restrict tickets, even though we have no restrictions in place with the state or the federal government.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're not trying to increase the capacity to the ski resort beyond what was approved in 2003.
And we're still within our permit, within our acceptable permit numbers for the US Forest Service as far as uphill capacity and comfortable carrying capacity goes with those guys who have already approved the replacement of the fixed grip triple to this detachable quad.
Anyone else, Joe?
Being this is further up in front of the mountain club, pose that road be less impact than the, and the parking keep coming in. There's not much difference, there's different, different numbers. What's scary is if you know with triple and take a triple in capacity to get everybody dispersed, it's been quick to get people off the, away from baseline, probably even safer than yet.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay.
I guess I look at it that, that the mountain club is not a residential use, it's a commercial use, it's a hotel, it's, it's transitory. No one lives there. So I'm not sure what a butters would input, would do to something like this. It's saying, well, what aspects of a site plan review would be meaningful to the planning board to review if we made them go through that? I mean, are we, are we looking at setbacks, are we looking, what are we looking at?
Well, I think he just said the number, the numbers aren't gonna increase the number of visits.
Well, the numbers are.
Well, he said they're not.
Right, he's not gonna sell any more tickets.
We're not selling more tickets, we're, we're moving, they're moving the lift feet to the left, the chairs are wider, it's 10 feet longer at the top, I mean.
And they're covered, so the inclement weather is not an issue for the people riding up.
No, it's not covered. No, he's saying, the inclement weather comment was that when the gondola shuts down.
Oh, I see.
Everybody who skis down to that lift can't use the gondola, so they go over the, to the fixed grip triple that's there now and it's, it's a, it's a cluster. This will help.
I believe you.
Yeah.
But if you have to notify butters, in this case, you're just for the mountain club, you just have to notify the association, they don't remember.
I, I'm not concerned about notifying, I'm concerned, my question is, who would have meaningful input as in a butter to a project like this if we made them go through, if the only reason making go through site plan is so butters can, can, can comment? My question is, what of butters are impacted by this? You have mostly out-of-state people who own one quarter of a share of a unit, that's a hotel room.
Well, there are some that I believe that own all of the share.
Can they live there, does the association allow them to live?
Yes, they do. They don't, I don't know if they live there or not, but I do know, I happen to know people who own units, total units. And then they, they use them as they come up or they may put them into their rental program. But I just thought, you know, we, like I said, down to the west end, I didn't see any, anything with that, but I do see this as just giving the opportunity to be transparent and just giving people an opportunity. I think that it is, it has a possibility of increasing, although, and well, it's gonna help alleviate the congestion down in the base area, but you know, it just, it will give people an opportunity to voice their concern they may have. It doesn't mean that it's gonna, I don't know what they can say, I have no idea. But I, I think that's what we're here for, is to be transparent in that regard. And I think that's, that's my own, that was my comment about this, I just, it may be nothing will change, you know, but.
I guess for the sake of discussion, you know, we've made other amusements in town, come in for limited site plan review and some of them you could make the same argument, or what a butter is gonna have any concerns.
Well, Clark's, we did it for Clark's, they did that big drag, I mean, that building, that, I mean, you know.
We've done it for the whale's tail.
We've done it for the whale's tail, I mean, you know, so we have done.
And I just tell you who the butters are, there's the White Mountain National Forest, there's the Westwood Acres, there's the town of Lincoln across the way, because we own the land that.
Is Westwood a part of that?
Westwood Acres, yeah. All they, all the roadways are part of the lot, or part of the loom lot.
I would have thought they were on the Bennett, but that's all right.
Yeah, they're all others.
Well, there's South Tower, that's Westwood, that's sure as hell has it. It isn't a butter, that's association. And we have. Beachwood. And it is, I think technically speaking, is probably an amusement ride, kind of, sort of. So does it have to come in, I don't know, but like I said, we made, we made the whale's tail and Clark's and when they did the thing down here, was it, you place that here.
I'll find it.
I mean, so we have done that where it has, where there have been people that are near it, you know, and living near it. So I, I just, they may be nothing, but if we, if we do it and do it right, then I think we can say we've given everybody a chance. If that mean.
Jay, did you want to add to, add?
Yeah, sorry, I don't have, I couldn't find the little hand raise thing, but anyways, thank you. Um, well, one, one difference between the, the examples that have been given in this is it, it's not an amusement ride, it is an aerial tramway that's certified by the state of New Hampshire to carry people from one place to another for the purpose of skiing. So it, it's not an amusement, it is a lift, it's a replacement of an existing use that we currently have in place. So I, I understand that we have a butters, but the amount of land that we operate on, we have a whole lot of butters and many of which, who had been mentioned as, such as Westwood, they can't even see this thing from their place. So the impact on people like that is, I mean, substantially minimum, if, if none whatsoever. We, we look at this as an improvement to the experience of people that are skiing the resort. And, and even at best, the lift doesn't even function every day of the week except for a holiday period. So it, it's there as, as I mentioned before, mainly an emergency backup for a lift that is susceptible to a lot of weather issues. And that's, that's what we're trying to do here, is improve that. I understand the proximity to the mountain club, but I think most people that are at the mountain club and, and I'm, I'm, I'm obviously summarizing it there, up there, but they're here for the mountain and for skiing in general and I, I don't think there's an issue there.
Hey.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments?
You think it's a good idea to just let somebody know if they have a problem with it, they can come in and say something, is that what's going on?
Well, basically, that would be the purpose of having a site plan review, we call the butters to be notified.
Have to go that deep, you think, yeah?
Well, if you have site plan review, this, you know, those are the requirements.
And the only way to notify a butters is through site plan review, unfortunately, but I mean, it is, it's a, it's a process that we would then fairly distribute to, like we've done before.
Okay, so, make a, so a motion to. Sorry, Joe?
If we excuse them, someone like you can say they want to be excused too, are we gonna set a precedent for doing this?
Well, you don't, you don't said, you don't said, you don't said precedent.
I didn't understand what you said.
I lost the tooth of that actually.
Repeating would be fine.
Kind of gets nasty worse. If we make this go, we go, would we, would we be setting a precedent for any other guy, people coming in? But I have to notify your butters.
No, absolutely not, every, every.
Every case is different.
Decision that we make is not precedent-setting.
Carol?
I just want to say for distinguishing is when Clark's has come in and when you have come in, it's been for a new attraction.
Right.
And this would not be a new, I mean, even if you thought of the lifts as attractions, it's not a new one, it's just.
It's just, it's just sort of like, you know, replacing one roller coaster with another.
It's only bigger.
Right, the other lift's been since the late seventies, am I correct? Yeah, yes, at least, so things got almost 50, 60 years on it. This would be no one much bigger, probably, I would imagine.
All right, yes, is there a motion to, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we waive site plan review for the replacement of the Seven Brothers Lift with the former Kang Express Lift.
I was saying that.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, okay, so that passes 4 to 1. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Great night.
Carol, I don't know if Susan changed that much.
All right, SPI 2020-20, map 108 lot 64 lot 65, Mark D. Stiles, trustee, S and A offices, Realty Trust Sabre Mountain Properties LLC and Sabre Mountain Properties II LLC, multi-use building, request for an extension of site plan approval. Mark D. Stiles, trustee, S and A offices, Realty Trust, PO Box 1113, North Marshfield, Mass. 02059. Property 1, former property owner, property number 1, Sabre Mountain Properties LLC, PO Box 820, Lincoln, New Hampshire, owned 155 Main Street, lot, map 118 lot 65. Current property owner, property number 1, Mark Stiles, DBA Flow State LLC, PO Box 1113, North Marshfield, Mass. 02059, now owns 155 Main Street, map 118 lot 65. Property number 2, former property owner, property number 2, Sabre Mountain Properties II LLC, PO Box 820, Lincoln, New Hampshire, 03251-0820, owned 153 Main Street, map 118 lot 64. Current property. What's your?
The second current owner should be 64 as well.
Okay. Current property owner, property number 2, Mark Stiles, DBA, it's an I-MLC, PO Box 1113, North Marshfield, Mass. Now owns 153 Main Street, map 118 lot 65, agent surveya. Joshua M. Alister, P.E., HEB Engineers, Inc., 2605 White Mountain Highway, North Conway, New Hampshire, 03860. Properties 155 Main Street, map 118 lot 65, Lincoln, New Hampshire, 153 Main Street, map 118 lot 64, Lincoln, New Hampshire. Properties are located in the Village Center, B.C. zoning district. Project application for site plan review, project includes the voluntary merger of two adjacent lots, the demolition of two buildings, one on each of the adjacent lots, and replacing the two buildings with the construction of 3,586 square foot, multi-use building consisting of retail and residential users, three commercial units total of 2,460 square feet. Proposed on the ground level, three apartments, units on the second level and three apartments on the third, third floor. Decision on January 13th, 2021, after duly noticed public hearings, the planning board voted twain the density requirements for this project by a 4 to 1 vote. Rationale, the town master plan states the town zoning order should provide, provide for some flexibility and sign for residential uses, units and mixed uses in established commercial areas, particularly in the village district. The town's land use plan orders allows for flexibility and density as long as the project meets all of the other zoning requirements, all of the zoning requirements are met. And voted to approve application for site plan review approval to merge two adjacent lots, demolish two buildings and replace buildings with one proposed multi-use building with the following conditions, demonstrate to have sufficient water and storage infrastructure to the satisfaction of town engineer Corber, remove the snow from the parking lot within 48 hours of a storm, a stormwater management plan approved by the town, by town engineer Raymond Corber, and group runoff mitigation plan approved by town engineer Raymond Corber. Mark, you looking just for an extension here?
I am.
Okay, so. So that would be January 13th.
Right, he hasn't until January 13th of 2020.
Two.
Two, but he's, he doesn't want to miss the deadline or anything and he's looking to have it extended for another year because things have changed. And then he's, he has a second after this where he wants to talk about maybe an interim proposal. So he'd like to have the extension under his belt and also talk about maybe changing it as a possibility. That's only at the conceptual level.
Right, not, Carol, not necessarily changing the overall, but in the interim, was looking to try to best use the structure that I have right now. The, the overall plan I'd like to think we can execute on, but in the meantime, I was hoping to, A, get an extension so that we can analyze this closer as the lumber costs start to come down and the supply chain loosens up, we can, we can closely analyze the project that's in front of you. But in the meantime, we may be looking at downsizing the overall project and in doing so, would be looking to have a residential unit above the 155 to help stabilize and, and keep things going in the right direction.
This is the building before you demolish it, you're not gonna demolish 155 and just put your apartment upstairs.
That would be the ultimate goal right now. And then work our way from 153 over, which would probably be, we'd probably be coming back with a modification on the lower end.
So, now let me deal with the extension first.
Please.
Does anyone have any issues with extending this to January 13th, 2023? Nope, all right, is there a motion to grant that extension to January? Is there a second, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, okay, and that passes. All right, I, go ahead, Mark.
So the idea is obviously we're looking at a project that seems somewhat overwhelming right now, but down the line, hopefully it works. But in the meantime, we've got the office space on the first floor of 155, almost ready to go. We're still waiting for furniture, but we're almost ready to go there. And what I would like to do is to utilize that upper space as a two-bedroom residential apartment. In the meantime, while we analyze the overall project or at a minimum start to build from 153 over to 155, maybe maintaining the size and structure of what 155 looks like. So it would be more of same-size commercial but less residential apartments above.
What's upstairs now?
It looked like it was, it looked like it was a residential apartment, there's a bathroom, it's a couple of rooms, an area that would easily retrofit to a kitchen and a large office. So what we would ideally do is keep the office in place, section off the apartment with an egress that can gain access through the office if necessary and have a two-bedroom apartment.
Each building has a bathroom upstairs, residential use.
So, okay, so you'd just be going back to the.
The original two buildings.
The ten apartment upstairs.
Correct.
So it would be a modified version of the overall project. It would be a mini version of what was approved for 155.
I mean, just not tearing the building down.
Not yet, 1, 150.
The same mindset, commercial downstairs and residential upstairs.
Correct, correct, and I may not tear down 155, I think 153 ultimately. Correct, correct, and I may not tear down one fifty-five, I think one fifty-three ultimately will need to be torn down, but. One fifty-five. I- i- if the concept works, and then we can. Work with the engineers to blend everything together, one fifty-five may never be torn down. So I would like to utilize and, and get the best use possible out of it while we're, while we're analyzing the, the overall project.
Does he need to come in for site plan review, just to put a residential component back in?
Well, see, it's interesting, because he has an approval already for those uses. But if he were coming in, um, I would make him go for site plan review, because he would be converting an office. To a residential, mixed use, residential and office.
Well, it already is, isn't it?
But you already approved.
Before that, it was a residential, commercial, uh, building. He hasn't applied to change, he applied for, for, to change it yet?
It wasn't residential.
No.
Where does that much space downstairs?
There was no one that lived over there, so, but I, I've been in that building, there was an office space.
Well, when, when John was working over there, it was office.
It was office, it was, it was, there was no resident, no one lived there.
The, the last, the la- very last use was all office, but it looks like it was clearly residential at one point.
I mean, it was a house at one time.
Right. Well, I mean, the last nine years that I've been here, it's been an office, it's. I met John on my first day of work, and she worked for Sabre Mountain across the street.
But the current approved use of that building is a mixed use, office on the first floor, residential upstairs.
Right.
Which he wants to do, right?
Well, I mean, the current for the site, I mean, that building's scheduled, what's approved now, that building's supposed to be coming down.
But the use, right, use, isn't changing.
Right, right.
It's an interesting question. It's, it's the, the structure was approved to be torn down and, and replaced. And, and that approval came with. You know, stormwater runoff issues and parking issues and all of this. At this point, he wants to keep that use, but not tear the building down yet. Is that a fair, fair summary?
Yeah, yes, it is.
And, and so it'd be one apartment, we just, you know, one apartment would be two parking spaces. And then the office space that he has downstairs, he has plenty of parking. Or.
Both buildings, actually.
For both buildings, as it is.
So there wouldn't be any parking issues.
So there wouldn't be any parking issues.
There's still more to grant, it's just.
It's a much less intensive use than he's approved for.
It's less, it's less, it's less living space than what he's approved.
Yeah.
Right, less living space, less square footage, less runoff problems. Less parking requirement. Um, no change in, in, in setback or any of that. What's, what, what are the issues that we, we'd be concerned about?
Not enough.
Not really. I'd take his land use permit.
You may have to do it, check the wire. Have Roger go and check for the fire alarms.
Smoke alarm, yeah.
Yeah, it's in safety egress to turn that back into a.
Still, it would still be a land use permit.
Permit.
Yeah, he only has land use permit, when, which, we'll have to inspect that, so.
Water chat fees.
Well, and he's got the approval, which extends a year at a time. So you, you know, he. So when his extension runs out and he hasn't done what he's proposed or come back for a modification. He would be essentially reviewing it once a year.
Right, but if you issue a land use permit for what he's asking for, office on the first floor, apartment upstairs. If he installs a kitchen upstairs, there would be water and sewer points related to that. And if he installs bedrooms upstairs, there'd be bedroom tax related to that. Which would come with the issuance of a.
Land use permit.
But I do think if he ends up changing it and changing the, the overall scope of the project and leaving. Going building there and modifying what his original project was, I think that needs to come back in. Cause it changes the whole.
Well, I think he knows that.
Okay.
Right, Mark, I mean, if you modify the whole plan, which you're gonna spend a year figuring out. Or, you know, maybe a year and a half, or whatever it is. If you do modify it, you'll, you'd have to come back and revisit it for a modification, and that would.
Right, but the goal is, is to not modify it now by adding in this, right?
And I guess I'm just sort of trying to think out loud here, so he'd be coming in once a year for the extension. Or if he's changed his mind, he's gonna come in for a modification, so that would be noticed to all the butters and everything. But meanwhile, he's.
Could use it like it's existing.
Right, I mean, he would just get a land use permit, I, I think that. You could do that, without requiring him to come back for site plan review.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think he has to request a waiver either.
No, it's only one, that's only one.
Yeah.
Apartment, right?
Yeah.
I rewrote the rules.
Yeah, I would say, go that route, that'd be my, my idea. Does anyone think different? Nope. And you're not making any changes to one fifty-three, is that correct?
No, that would be left the way it is right now.
Yeah, so that's, you could just get a land use, Carol, and get your permit for, be a factor, one fifty-five, and you could go.
Okay.
Alright.
Excellent, well, thank you folks very much.
Yeah, best wishes, Mark.
Thank you.
Any public participation? Any other business?
Talked about the C I P last, I mean, anyone had any questions? I haven't had a chance to really go back through and get all the minutes, but if anyone had any questions, we were supposed to talk about those tonight, and. Going to. Have a public hearing.
Next week.
No, no.
No, November.
Finish.
Yep. Anyone have any questions from the C I P? Anything else? Second, alright, all in favor?
Go on.
Aye.